Welcome to the North Smithfield Town Council meeting of October 21st, 2013. This is the portion of our agenda which is an open forum pursuant to around general law section 42-46-6D. So we've got about 15 minutes. I know that there are some people that wanted to address the council, so I would just ask if you would like to address the council, that you step to the lectern and just identify yourself for the record? And anybody who would like to step forward?
Councilmember, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to say just a few quick words. I've written a letter which describes my concerns. My name is Amy Lombardo. I live next to the high school. My specific concerns are on the relay for sports event, which has acquired a special permit for the last few years through this avenue. The sporting event, although commendable because it is very a novel idea for the children, they seem to have no time for it, seems to be fun, pretty nice for the children, it seems to be a bit disruptive for our neighborhood. Specifically, there are about 25 homes that abut the school property. Those homes are subject to stadium-style music, announcements, games, activities, and lights, stadium-style lights throughout the evening. No one gets any sleep in our neighborhood that night, but yet these special permits keep getting issued. No one seems to see the other side of the scenario, even though the children are having a really wonderful night and it is a novel idea. I'd like you guys to possibly consider the rights of the homes that abut the property, the rights of the citizens, the babies, the adults, elderly who live next to that facility, those homes that have been there for 60, 70 years, well before that stadium was built. They're being kept up all night long for this one event in the name of charity. I don't ever endeavor to come here and just complain without giving solutions. My suggestion has been that this event could easily take place indoors, maybe not even all night, maybe some of the evening. Maybe the event begins outdoors, they have lots of outdoor activities, and then they bring it inside when it gets a little too late for the rest of the community to bear the burden of it. Or possibly the event could be held somewhere where it doesn't abut so many residences. I don't know that an all-night-long sporting event is really conducive of a residential neighborhood setting. So my suggestions have been to maybe consider encouraging everyone involved with acquiring a non-residential site to host the event. I really am at a loss for how to and who to bring this to. It does not appear that the people that are organizing the event are interested in changing it. The school does know my concern, and I thought I'd also bring it to the council members who are giving the special permits, because in the end, it is the special permit that's giving them the permission to do this all night long. So I'm asking you to consider a year in advance, I'm here, that's how important it is to me. I'm asking you to consider next year what the residences around the facility are being asked to put up with for the entire event. And maybe you could encourage everyone involved to reconfigure or retool the event, so that no one gets hurt and everyone in the community can enjoy it and have just enough. That's my thoughts, but thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
I just have one. Honestly, we never heard any complaints before. This is the first time we've heard of it. And other than that, everyone says it goes fine, there's no problems, so that's why we did it.
Excellent. Absolutely understood. And just making people don't know where to complain or where to bring their concerns to. I was guided here, and hopefully this first initial conversation registers, so that you guys can think about how the event should change in the future.
I also have one. Did you have a question?
Do you want to state your opinion? Please. Ms. Lombardo, thank you. I thank you for your stability. As Councilman McGee said, this is kind of the first time I've heard of it, and I've read the email, and there is a problem, but you bring potential solutions, and I think they're great solutions. I would just like to encourage dialogue with the folks that run this event. You said yourself, "I believe that this is a great event for our kids." And I also read somewhere that there were some kids outside of the chain link fence walking around.
That's correct.
You know, we don't know who those kids were. Were they kids that didn't register, that wanted to get there, couldn't get there? Were they outside-of-town kids? We don't know that stuff. But there are folks here that do a lot of work for our kids, they're in the audience, and I certainly don't want to call on them, but they know who they are, maybe there could be some dialogue, because I particularly like the idea, excuse me, of having some outside activities and then bringing it inside. And also, it would also address potential bad climate weather should it come that way. So I think that the dialogues are opened up, and hopefully we can resolve this. But I'd like to continue, but I certainly don't want to see it causing unnecessary damage to the broadcast and like, or lights of the event and windows and that type of stuff. So there has to be a happy meeting.
Thank you. You're sensitive, I appreciate it.
My only question, is this the only event throughout the year that causes a concern? Are there other ones?
There's other ones.
This is a particular concern to me, specifically because we do sleep all night long. We work very closely and we have a very amicable relationship with the school. We work with Tony, who is the facilities director, and we ask him or notify him if there's any vandalism or weird late-night events happening near to the facility that neighbors might hear nuisance of. But in particular, they're always very responsive and usually can, I think they handle things fairly decently, in my opinion. This particular event being all night long is what makes it so egregious for everyone?
Thank you. I just want to remind folks, so we've got about seven minutes left. This doesn't mean that we can't continue to have discussion on this topic. We also, we can't, so you know, we can't take any votes, because it is an executive section, it's in good welfare, but if it's the will of the council, we can have this come back as an agenda item at some future date. So is there anybody else that would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Sue Landy. I was going to talk what Amy just spoke about, but our concern on the Range Road side of that ball field is the equipment that we're assuming that the other teams are bringing in when they rent out the field. It's not Fenway Park, it's just a ball field. You can hear that noise to the top of Pomona Street, you can hear that on Iron Mine Hill Road, Rocky Hill Road, Providence Pike, Range Road, and some of Greenville Road. But that last event that Amy was speaking about, people up at Lake Valley I could hear that. There needs to be, we understand the ballgames and the noise and everything, but the last couple of years, it has been tremendously too loud. The neighborhood has a lot of senior citizens in it, and it's disruptive. You work all day, you get up the front door and you work all day, you come home, and you have to put up with that noise. The PA system, it's too big for that area. Basically, it's just the noise. It's loud. Also, on the tennis courts, I have, I'm lit up like a Christmas tree from the ball field and the tennis court, and I have called up tennis courts lights on. They're on report of 11 at 9:00, 10:30, 10 o'clock. And I've called, and they turn them off at 9:00, and that's lasted for a few weeks, and then it starts all over again. We can hear the people talking, we can hear the ball being hit. And we would just like that to stop, or turn it down. That's all we have to say on that.
Thank you. Anybody want to respond? Is there anybody else that would like to? Mr. Alter?
I'd agree more with the two better. I thought we had the noise accorded, but it wasn't. This is common sense. I would have thought that the school department would have, if this is what the body was involved with us, would have thrown in some restrictions on noise and light and so forth. And the hours, because it just makes no sense to have this at night. It's a very dense community we live in. We're not living in a country set, we're all very close to each other. And I'm talking about something else. My name is Ernest Bolgner of 600 Victory Highway, I'm a fellow, Mr. Chairman, Town Council. I'm very concerned as someone who's been quite much involved in healthcare costs and the healthcare industry, and I keep my ears to sort of to what's going on here. I understand, I just heard today, the healthcare cost generally has come out and said they're going up 62% for women and 99% for men because of the nationalization of our healthcare. And what I have to say is simply this sudden new awakening and skyrocketing health cost raises the issue of how this is going to affect healthcare costs the town currently provides for its employees. Do we know what the dollar amount is we currently spend? Do we know what the dollar amount is projected for next year? Can the town afford to continue to ask taxpayers to finance and sort of an open-ended healthcare cost for public employees when few taxpayers have their healthcare provided by anyone else but themselves, and many are struggling, especially elderly on fixed incomes? There was a time when such government largesse was both affordable in practice, maybe 50, 60 years, I don't know how well I remember. At what point does this benefit become simply unaffordable to the town in an unreasonable burden on taxpayers who are going to stay in their own homes? In the private sector, businesses must slash their fixed costs, remain in business, and prosper. Today, we find that many employees are eliminating or certainly drastically cutting back financing healthcare to employees. Why should public employees be treated any differently? Whatever happens equals justice under the law. By what moral or divine right are public employees entitled to such governmental largesse, considering the drastic changes that have taken place in recent years? And if North Smithfield is to survive and prosper, should not the town council be looking into this? What types of residential and commercial rates will distinguish our town as the best place to live and conduct business? What do we have to do in order to achieve this goal? These should not be simply lofty ideas, these should be goals by which we set our policy. And I have to applaud you for asserting your absolute right and authority to set the policy for this town, as opposed to, say, the school department.
Mr. Alter, I'm going to have to interrupt and maybe call up there, because we're approaching the hour to begin the meetings, and I did want to make sure that everyone who had a chance to say something would be recognized.
Yes, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Nangle, Brenda Goffarmo. I'm the president of the NSAA, so I will try to answer some of the objections. I realize this is good and welfare, we just made comments and nothing, we'll vote it out. I think the event went exactly as we had hoped it would go this year. We had in excess of 100 middle school and high school students attending. We turned the music off earlier this year than last year. The music went off, contrary to what some people have said. The music was completely shut until 11:30. The police were called, it sometimes prior to that. Police arrived, police stayed outside the gate. The gate is closed at all times. It's not locked, but it is closed. We have somebody sitting at that gate to make sure nobody comes in, to make sure nobody goes out. Nobody was walking the streets, trust me, nobody. That's on my watch. I sit by the gate, there's nobody walking the streets. These kids are very, very, very long-term kids. They're kids, they're middle school and high school kids, having a great time. It's an all-night event, camp out, they look forward to it. Police came, I went out, said, "Would you like to come in?" He said, "No, I do not want to come in, I want to sit here and I want to hear the noise." And I said to him, "What would you like us to do?" He said, "We don't want you to do anything, you're fine." You could not hear the music from where he was sitting in the driveway. We had somebody drive Range Road a couple times to see if the noise was loud there as well. I think the noise would be louder on Range Road, it would be on top, it's like, because everything is facing that direction. Police came back a second time with their lieutenant, after midnight, he was upset, he was on his way home. He stopped, wanted to make sure that we did have authorization to be there. We told him we did, we just want him to look into that if we so desired. Asked him, "What do you recommend we do?" He said, "I think we're fine." He said, "I don't really see an issue." I had a conversation with one of the neighbors earlier in the night, I will not mention his name. He came with me and said that two years ago, we've only done this twice, two years ago this year, asked me to do, I asked to keep the noise to a minimum. I asked him if the noise was too loud at that point, because that was as loud as it would be throughout the night. He said, "No, but I'm asking you." Throughout the night? And I said, "Please, if you have a problem, just walk across the street, come see, we'll look it out." That didn't happen. So the police were called, the police did come, we were respectful, they said that they did not see where we needed to do anything. Be more than happy to sit with any of the neighbors and try to discuss how this could be a better event. Be happy to. But I will, Buck stops with me, I will take all responsibility for it. I believe in the event, I believe it's healthy, I believe kids need to be outdoors more often, and this is an event that allows them to do that. We had a lot of chaperones, 15 to 20 chaperones at any given moment. And we made bathroom runs to the high school every hour on the half-hour with an adult male, an adult female, so that they didn't have to use porta-johns, because some kids were totally grossed out by that. Another reason why they need to get outdoors more. That's probably a problem. Anyway, be happy to sit with anybody who would like to discuss it. We're always looking to modify the events we run. We hold monthly board meetings right here, fourth Monday of every month, our meetings are wide open. We have team reps for every team, middle school and high school. We have productive meetings for one and a half hours. And anyone that would like to come and discuss it, give me a call, be happy to put them on the agenda, be happy to discuss it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure you can.
So it's October 21st. If we brought this back for council agenda item on November 18th, would that be a sufficient amount of time for you to meet with some of the neighbors and see if together you can come forward with the resolution?
Absolutely.
Because I think we should, you know, make some, we've been asked to look at this, and I'd prefer that it be resolved to the extent that it can be between the NSAA and the neighbors. And if you can come back and report to us on the 18th, what, if any progress is made at any rate.
Absolutely. That's not an issue at all.
Should we put that on the agenda, do you think? Great, thank you. So we're at 7:05, we've kind of gone over five minutes. If there's anybody that would really like to just make a quick statement, I'll extend the good and welfare for just another moment. Otherwise, we'll begin with the agenda. Okay. So we'll move on to, we'll begin with the prayer and pledge.
Lord, sister, by help the spirit of council, although serving in the need of glory and responsibility.
... by the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk, will you do the roll call?
Sal, and Mr. McGee.
Yeah.
Yesba.
Here.
Zulewski.
President.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item 4, North Smithfield Town Council Sitting as the Board of Water Commissioners. Listens as discussion by council voter of action on adoption of water budget and rates this full year, 2014. Sam is a carpenter's here with us, and I think a couple of other items, Russ, that you're probably going to be providing some input to, so I want to try to move those up.
Yeah, because I got one of me watching tonight.
We received in our packet the budgets. We had some questions last time, I don't know if Brenda P. wants to hear something in this discussion, and then get Russ's input.
Russ and I did sit together the other day for quite a while to go over the line that was on the budget a little bit more. We did get some updated numbers from Monseca Water that we did want to put in our expenses, and we did go over the invoices that I did include in the package of stuff that Russ is looking to do this year, and he'll explain that a little bit more. So we did change the expenses up to really reflect the number for the water, which we had, I think, 227,000, 225,000, which we did put on the bottom, but the actual number is for Monseca Water. So we did increase the fees back to what we originally, we did increase, and we left them at the increased 75,000, but we did have to change the usage fee up to 600,000, I think it's 661 per thousand, per residential and commercial, and that will cover the expenses that Russ does have, which is included in this budget now. I wasn't there at the last meeting, but we did, like I said, go through every line, looked at everything, looked at the invoices that we wanted to have the work done, and that's where we're at right now.
Just where the 661 reflects the next report, I believe, is it right?
Yes, yes, so we didn't want to do it. Yeah, we didn't want to do supplemental tax, so we left the first report as at the old rate and increased the 30,000.
Can you just identify where in the document the 661 is?
It's going to be in the revenue under the user fee per year, before 75,000. That's including the first, that's for the whole year, but it's including half of the old rate and half of the increased rate.
So I'm looking at the revenue portion of the budget.
The second line.
Second line, user fees currently here.
Yes.
But the rate is not in there, is that correct?
No, that's just the total.
Okay.
Questions, please?
My district are, the commercial maintenance fee will be how much as proposed by the administration?
Can you give me one second? I'm trying to pull up. Sorry, my computer was on, I just have to do some more, so let's get this right around. It would be, what did you ask me to get outside?
The commercial maintenance fee correlates to 37,50 a quarter.
It would be, it was at, sorry, I'm trying.
It's 150 a year, 37.
Yeah, it would go to 172, chapter new ways.
And the consumption charge would be going from 585 to 661?
Correct.
And there's a consumption surcharge?
That's for the state, that's a state surcharge.
As a state surcharge, is there any plan to increase in that, do you know?
I have not heard of one. I did talk to Monseca Water, and I talked to the border commission, and that's the way.
And the additional units on the commercial side?
Excuse me?
Additional units on the commercial side? They're currently at 31.25 a quarter.
It would be the same, 172.
It's going to stay the same?
It was 150, so 172.
For additional units as well?
Yes. What about, that's the user fee, you're asking me the additional unit fee?
Yeah, additional unit.
Yeah, it was, is 143.74, it was 125.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions for the estimate, is it worth? I don't know if anybody has any questions.
The only question I have, it's an enormous amount of money, I know, but we need to do it, it's extensive work. I didn't see anything unless I missed it. They refer to what the life expectancy is after the work is done.
Well, listen, the one for the 272,000 for the overhaul of the tank is not going to, this, that work, the question I guess you guys had, what that work ain't scheduled for this year. That's the next year's capital.
Trying to play for capital.
It's on the revolving state fund, request this besides, so.
So what you're, I think that what we had the last time, because you weren't here, was a question as to whether some of these things, or whatever things that were here that you had wanted to do.
Right, and that's why I provided, that's why I provided these last three slips here with the allies construction, I picked those out.
Falls Water Works, Allied Construction, Allied Construction again, Pittsburgh Tank for...
Pittsburgh Tank one is the only one that I'd like to see when the town should get done this year, is the dismantle of the tank on Country.
Is that out of this budget?
I believe Brenda has it in there.
No, we didn't put the 30,000 in. We wanted to request it, but we didn't put it in. That was one that you were questionable, whether we put a holdup on it or not, but these you definitely wanted in, and that was the kind of question. So the 30,000 is not included in.
So, I'm sorry, these things were scanned in and now they're sideways. So, and I can't, I'm getting old.
You want to see this? One I gave you.
No, just this, there's a highlighted, there's a highlighted capital or repairs, maintenance column. What's that number in the highlight? Is it 34 or 54?
34.
34.
Okay, thank you.
And he had 20, and we took out the chemical supplies, which we wanted to throw that separately. So that's the difference, plus the invoices.
If I may, Mr. President, I think Russ should explain what these three invoices are that he's looking for and the rationale behind it, just so you can make a reasonable decision. These are things that we pared down from a number of potential things that could have been done, and we tried to push some to the next year. But these three, we've gone, we've gone round and round about them, and they're definitely public safety hazards, so I'd like him to explain that, just so you have a better sense of what kind of work we've done, why.
All right, the Allied Construction one on the 106 Main Street, that's an old water pump house station building. The roof, the roof is in the midst of collapsing right now. There's just two wooden doors, somebody could kick them in. There's a hatch on an open well that's three feet wide by four feet. Water is 15 feet deep in that hole, and the hole is 16 by 12. That's one of the main, that's one of these, this has been, I mean, that well has been down for like, I don't know how many years, and nobody's done nothing with it yet.
It's an accident waiting to happen.
The second one, Freedom Lane Pump House Foundation. The second one, Freitas Lane Pump House Foundation, I believe, Ray can correct me, I think the highway took that down about five years ago. They never, never, they never filled the hole in yet, the foundation is still there. This year, out of the regular repair and maintenance, I had the well sealed and capped, if anybody could just pick a stone off, and it was like a 12-inch, 12-inch hole there with 400 feet deep. So that's capped right now, but I'd like to see the foundation knocked in and filled in, because it's like four feet deep, kid running around the top of it, another accident waiting to happen. The Pacheco Park, the Pacheco Park well is not as big a critical of an issue, we've already taken, Ray has taken the building down already of that part of that wellhouse, and this is just a well. We pulled all the pump out in there this year also. That's 400 feet deep also, eight-inch opening, needs to be routed and filled, which would cost $5,600 to do that one.
We can't just cap that? Why can't we just cap it?
The requirement from the state, it needs to be filled with a special grout, the park can help.
The well needs to be filled?
To seal, to seal the pores of the aquifer, so nothing else can get down in there.
So we're using that well?
Nope, no, it's been down.
So why do we care if something goes down? I don't understand.
Well, if you pollute the aquifer, you'll care.
I was just trying to understand how we're going to pollute the aquifer.
If somebody drove something down there.
Don't, don't talk too loudly, please. I'm serious.
And that's by the state.
Right.
How soon can that be completed?
How soon can it be? I, as soon as we okay it, I can call the well company in here to fill, stop filling it in.
So why would we have to fill that one with special grout and not the 106 Main Street?
Because that one's a hand-dug well on Main Street.
So it's a shallow one?
Right.
Got it. Russ, I'm following the bouncing ball. So we discussed with Freitas?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, we have a bid here from Allied Construction, was this put out to bid, it's only $1,250.
It was just an estimate, so, it was an estimate, so you guys could see about, I mean, we can, I mean, all of these.
You can favor it, you don't even need to.
Go out, uh, a bid or whatever.
Not a doubt about it, no. So, Mr. President, are we looking for a motion to approve payment of $1,250 so the Freitas Lane Pump House Foundation can be filled properly?
I think, I think what we're looking for is a, is a adoption of the water budget and rate for fiscal year 2014.
Okay.
And they're all, those items are included in that.
But the only one that's not included is the demolishing of the tank.
Of the tank, yeah.
That's next year.
That would be an added on if, if you choose to do that, $30,000.
That actually came in June of this year, so it was passed this budget cycle, so we know it's for next year.
And that won't be replaced, the plan isn't for that to be replaced?
That tank?
Right.
No, this meant we can't, it's not big enough to use.
Looks like a sieve.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to accept the proposed water budget and rate for fiscal year 2014 as recommended by the town highness director?
I make the motion, I'm on the vote board, I make the motion. Make a motion, we adopt the 2014 budget of, 523166, if I read the red line?
Motion by Mr. Yadback, is there a second? A second by Mr. McGee, discussion. I guess I'd like, I'd be interested in, in understanding better your concern.
Well, this is a 13% rating for Onsakka Water. I may bring myself to the role for that.
Is there, do you see an alternative?
No, I don't.
So if we, if we uniformly rejected it, where would we go from there?
I don't know.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? Harry Nunett asked for the roll call vote.
South? Yes. Mr. Yehes?
Yes.
Mr. Zelensky?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes, motion carries. Unless there's any objection, I'm going to recommend that we move another item, or that this carpenter maybe felt full, and that is under, as long as it's okay with Mrs. Wonski, because this is your, this is your item, well, under new business, which is item 11A, discussion by council voter of other action on Silver Pines sewer concerns. Anybody object to moving that up?
No, I have no objections, Mr. President. I'll make that motion.
Actually, we don't need to make the motion, just need to make sure that.
We have to vote on it to, to vote on it?
No, no.
No?
The council president's for argument. So would you like to lead us off, Mr. Zelensky?
Yeah, I can. What's before us is voter action on Silver Pines sewer concerns. What's happened before, we've had, I've actually attended the sewer commission meeting to follow that thought process on this. The folks at Silver Pines are paying a sewer use fee, the same fee that everybody else uses. The question has become, should the lines become blocked? Who's responsible for jetting those lines? It becomes a matter of public safety and health. I'm a firm believer that if they're paying that amount, they should be entitled to have those sewer lines cleaned, like any other resident in town. Now, where it becomes a little contentious is we, we go back and, Mr. DeMayo's the resident historian here, he's here this evening, he can probably help me with this, but going back to previous council minutes, that say that upon completion of this development, that the infrastructure will be turned over to the town. Now, there's a lot more history to that than just that council meeting. What council did was, in order to facilitate private development in town, this private development required sewer lines to run down one of our main roads. It did not go onto a bond, a referendum, it went out so that private development could come to town and put in high-density housing. It also had to do with one of the wells, and a lot of other myriad of problems going on that location. So, long story short, it was passed by council, they were kind of acting as the board of planners, which they never should have in the first place, it got very contentious, and Mr. Flaherty involved in it as well. So, coming down to this, there were dozen houses on Main Street that had to pay sewer assessment fees, so it's $5,200. What the town council at that time did was 2,600 went to the developers to help them offset their costs, 26 supposedly came to the town. That was for the pipes and the road. During the whole planning process, this was promoted as a private development. And I'm on record as saying that, you know, we should basically not make it private, make it the town standards, because we'll be facing this problem years later, and here we are, ladies and gentlemen, we're facing this problem years later. Not that I'm, Madam, what was that, we were arrested, they used to look in the crystal bowl, Madam Clayle? You didn't have to be Clayle Boyne to know that this was going to cause a problem. So here we are, we're looking at it. Basically, I would like to establish once and for all this evening, that any rate payer that pays a sewer fee in this town should be entitled to having the lines cleaned and jetted that are republic infrastructure. That brings us to the lines that are in Silver Pines. Not sure that they've been heated over to the town, but as a matter of public safety, if these folks are paying this use fee, I think those lines should be maintained. I'm not saying going in to rebuild them, I'm not saying going in to take care of manholes and all this stuff, but we did accept the pump station, which is an integral part of that development, am I right, Russ? Okay, so, and hopefully I summed it up, this is where we're at. I'm of the firm belief that we should honor that sewer use fee, and those folks should be entitled to have their sewers cleaned, those lines, whether the town over it or not, they should be maintained from a jetting and cleaning of the year. Now, also saying that, I'm also talking to the very Larry of every other private development in town that'll come before us and say, well, you took Silver Pines' infrastructure, take ours, and I adamantly oppose to that. So there you have it. That's where we're at, on my perspective.
So, could you elaborate on the distinction that you make between Silver Pines and any other private development that you would not want to open this door to?
Without naming them, we may see one of them coming to us real soon on the agenda as well, for water.
Well, it's not even naming, just, but just in the category of any, any other ones that you, that you're suggesting you don't want to open that door to, I'm just trying to.
Laurel Woods, Silver Pines, Rock Cliff, that's a, Laurel Woods, Rock Cliff, and condominiums in Blackstone, I always forget the name, what is it? Cliff? Rock Cliff, oh, I got it, okay. So, so the thing is, why this gets a little more convoluted is that even though there was no referendum to put sewer lines down, maybe not Main Street, there is some beneficial for the folks over there, because their sewers, their septic system will fail at some point. The other development, I believe, Laurel Woods used a gravity feed, they found an improvement right away, which really did not benefit anybody in the vicinity of them. So there's a lot of ways to weigh this up.
Yeah, I, I agree on some of it, and this, it is a problem. I really don't love the sewer in North Smithfield, the boards forever. I don't understand how we've ever even got along all these years. Even myself, I've worked with it, and it's been so hard, I have to go to Mrs. Hamilton and work with another company to, to get things done. It's, it's been different, every sewer board has done a different thing, and everybody keeps saying, oh, that's wrong, this is wrong. You're gonna, and, you know, I was reading over, I've seen Mr. DeMayo come up, I've, I've heard why he shouldn't get it, I heard why he should get it. I mean, the guy looks at it, he does his homework, he comes up to me, comes up, I listen, I go, yeah, that's a pretty good idea, you're right. And then I go and talk to someone else from the sewer commission and everything, and they say, if you take one, you take all. But then when I was reading through the minutes of the sewer commission last week, I wasn't able to attend, Ken Murphy had said, you know, he felt the same way as I felt, and that Mr. DeMayo and everyone pays that fee, and if he doesn't pay the fee, why, why should he? Why should he pay the fee if he doesn't pay the time? But on the other hand, Mr. Murphy, it just, he was kind of a neutral party, I thought, and he's, and he felt exactly how I felt. If you're just going to blow one out, you're talking about just blowing out lines, and if something's broken on private property, we wouldn't take it over. And that's what Mr. Murphy had said also. He says, he's not for going on property fixing anything, but if it's just a blowout. And, Russ, really, how many times have we had to blow out sewers anywhere?
I said, they're the only one in five years.
In five years? Are we really fighting about that? I had a, I had a long fight yesterday, I had breakfast with my, you know, my father, and, you know, my, my mother, this is, anyway, it went on for an hour, and we discussed this all morning, and at the end, we came to the agreement, yeah. We shouldn't, we should blow out the sewers. We should blow them out, we're not responsible for going on the property and fixing anything, but if you have a little blockage, it's not a big deal. You're paying, I, I think, I've changed my mind about a lot of things, and I think that blowing out the thing, it's not a big deal, I, I think we should be doing, they're being inspected, these laterals are being inspected every time from, from everybody. It's not like these developers are putting them in and sneaking things in, they're inspected. They're inspected twice, so you shouldn't have any problems with them. So one in five years, are we, are we really, you know? I don't know, I think it causes more problems if we don't accept it than that, and that's, that's where I am right now.
May I follow, Mr.? Russ, I want to pose a question to you. As a water superintendent, are you responsible for flushing the lines that are in there?
We don't do nothing to, right now, on those lines.
Okay, the closest would be where I live right now.
Oh, what, now, you're saying sewer flushing, right now?
Yeah, but how about?
Water flushing, I go in there and do it.
You have to, by, by what?
D O A Department of Health regulations.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem.
I'm responsible for the water up to the tap, unfortunately, and it doesn't work that way for the sewer.
Okay, thanks. Well, so, this is on the agenda tonight for discussion. So it's actually, it can be up for, for anything.
Right. So can, can we come to a decision here about a process, should the lines get blocked in the future? Then it would be the town's responsibility, I mean, after all, these folks are paying us $373 a year, like everybody else in town. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we officially get this established, I don't want to talk about anything else that's on the, under this topic. But I would like to make a motion that from this point forward, that the town will be responsible for actively flushing the sewer lines should they become blocked. That's a motion, Mr. President.
Motion to me by Mr. Zelensky.
Excuse me, just one other thing. When we're talking about private roads we don't own, we don't own the state roads either anywhere around, so I, I was seconding that, too. So I'm surprised, Mr. DeMayo, you'd come up with that. You usually have arguments.
Good point, Mr. McGee. So before, before we have any further discussion, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGee, discussion.
May I? I need to know what it is we're committed to. I don't understand this, because if we're going on, blowing, we're going to blow out a line, does that require us to go on private property?
Yes.
Yes, we go on state roads.
Can we do that anywhere else, for any other residents?
We have rescue response and police response respond over private property.
No, I mean, for, for the sewer, sewer.
I get that, but, but you said private property, so we have police go there, we have fire go there, we have trash and recycle. Yes, we do.
Okay, so, my next question would be, if we're committing to doing this for one, we're prepared to have others come and ask us the same thing?
If, Hank, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting.
Now, even if it doesn't have a direct benefit to other residents, like you pointed out on Main Street?
Yes, we would, we'd certainly jet the lines out and go on Main Street without problems. Now, this leads us into a question, let me make the scenario for you. Laurel Woods, which does not transfer, on state road or town road, uses a gravity fed right away, nobody else has benefited from it, but then it's a private development, they're paying use fees though, aren't they? How many, how many use of fees are they paying for?
They pay for each, each unit, right, Russ?
Yep. Same thing, the 393 as Rock Cliff, everybody pays the same.
The thing that I think we need to clarify is the maintenance, the operation and maintenance portion of that 393 is for the operation and maintenance of the entire system. You know, that's a portion that we paid Onsakka for the use of their facilities as well. I mean, it's not a private maintenance fee. You can get a private maintenance insurance, we've sold that in the last couple of years. Excuse me. But this, the operations and maintenance portion of that fee does not mean that we will go on a property and provide a service that a private contractor should be doing. Now, that's where I think we might be getting a little confused. You're right, they do have the same fee, because they're all part of the same system, which all goes to Onsakka, and that's the fees we are charged.
The difference here, Madam Administrator, was back on the previous council, that they were, they were in council minutes saying that once this is completed, the infrastructure would become the property of the town.
Right.
So that was part of it, that was the promise that was made back then. I, can I tell you? I didn't agree with it, but there it is resurfacing.
And we did accept the pump station.
Right.
Which is part of the infrastructure. Did you have a problem?
When I inquired about that, about what you just said, I was told that that was, they acquired the public portion, not, not the private portion. I don't know what that really means, but that was the answer that I received, because I inquired about it as well. So I don't know.
And I'd like to just, I mean, if I can offer this, the conversation, before we get too, too far down this, this road, I'm, I'm personally not comfortable in, in acting on a motion without having sewer. far down this road, I'm personally not comfortable in acting on a motion without having sewer commission input. And I realize we've got layers, and I realize that, but there's some very strong feelings there. I also realize that we've got some, a lot of work to do on addressing issues within the sewer ordinance that need to be fixed. And I'm just reluctant to do sort of a one-off without getting the input. And I think that, if I'm not mistaken, the sewer commission has expressed strong feelings about this. And I know that they're not here this evening, but I wouldn't feel comfortable taking action without involving the sewer commission. I don't know if others in the council feel that way or not. And Mr. DeMaio, I want to give you an opportunity. I'm just being mindful of the fact that, so we could pre-visit here all night and discuss this issue, and if we're not going to end up being able to resolve it tonight, I'm wondering if we need to get additional information on the table first. We've got a motion, it's been seconded, we can take that vote, we're gonna take that vote, but I just feel as if there's not enough input, at least for me, to make a decision. But others, do you feel differently?
Mr. President, council administrator, legal. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not an engineer, but what I have is 30 years of experience in wastewater treatment, and I want to give you something that will justify that. I have state road license, wastewater treatment valid, given by D E M. That's my number 76, you can see how long I've had it. I want to present that to you guys. So, in this, on this subject, I have a lot of experience. I can go one-on-one with anybody, and I'm not being a wise guy with that. I've been in front of your sewer commissions twice, once in front of a disgruntled board who had a disagreement with the last solicitor and the administrator, and they all resigned. I was in front of a new commission, and in my opinion, don't have any experience, and cannot give you the right information. So, what I'm trying to tell you here is this. The people we want to keep off our back is D E M. And when we overflow, and he can vouch for this, D E M is gonna be all over you. Regardless, private, public, whatever, D E M is gonna come right down on you with fines because they don't tolerate any overflow. Now, as far as infrastructure, excuse me, what I am asking for is because of a user fee, and because we're in a condominium, we're still considered a residential establishment times 62. We pay $390 times 62 for the use of the sewer lines. And what that entails is waste elimination and maintenance of lines. That's what the money goes to. That's what I'm asking for. Point two, if you cannot give us that, then deduct the portion of the maintenance fee from the amount we pay. I don't know how much that is. If you can't give us that, then I want to describe infrastructure, and I got some packets here, and also have the council minutes of 2000, 2001, which is attached. First of all, it's the definition of infrastructure relating to sewerage. I got the definition from, on the internet, from the World Bank Group, and I underline it. The largest international financier of water supply and sanitation projects. Infrastructure, the basic components. Infrastructure is the hardware, for example, laterals, pits, sewer pipes, trucks, and wastewater treatment plants required by households and communities for the safe management of their excreta. And the objective is to reduce health risk and minimize negative impact on environment at a reasonable cost. That's what infrastructure is. Then the next page, water, it's related to water. Water can be defined as stock the facilities and installation needed to develop and manage water resources, including delivery, treatment, supply, and distribution. There's another page that describes infrastructure. And the last page...
I'll try to back you up.
Yes, sir.
On that page 97, you read the introduction. I think if you read the whole paragraph, it'll have more impact. In your knowledge, sir, I know you understand this, but I think you skipped over some real poignant points here.
Which one is that?
What infrastructure, introduction, that first paragraph, if you could read it in its entirety.
Well, it says the basic components, infrastructure is the hardware.
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Page 97.
Next page, 97.
Okay. Water, infrastructure can be defined as a stock of facilities and installations needed to develop and manage water resources, including delivery, treatment, supply, and distribution of water for all its users, as well as for the collection, removal, treatment, and disposal of sewage and wastewater. And the reason why I brought infrastructure to you guys is because, a while back, I went to the town clerk's office, and I did some homework, I sat there a while, and I found on book 21, dated September 18, 2000, which you have in front of you. I got the whole, I got a lot more than what I have here, but I didn't bring it. But if you look down by the motion, motion was made at that council at that time by O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Brian Byron, that upon completion of the sewer lines, water lines, and any related infrastructure, because they're talking about D A S, that they be turned over to the town. Motion passed unanimously on a rule called "Wolfe of the Council." So, with that, I'd like my wife to address a question to you people, which we did many moons ago, but I'd like her to address it to you. If you don't mind.
I had spoken about this before, I had come before the town council before, and I had asked a few questions, so that when you read the minutes, you know what is in the minutes is actually going to happen. And my question was, when a motion is made, and it's seconded, and it's passed, what is that called? At the time I asked that, and they said, "Well, what do you mean?" And I said, "Well, is it a mandate, an ordinance, what is it called? Council action? Is that correct?"
Decision.
No, at the time, did they call it a council action? I believe that was the answer I had received. And my second question was, okay, if that's what it's called when the council action is made, who is the party responsible to see that that action is actually completed correctly and to its completion, to its final completion? And I was told at the time that it's the town administrator. I said, "Okay." And then I asked, "Well, if the town council has made this action, and the town council changes from the time that the action was made, does that absolve any kind of responsibility for seeing it through to completion?" I was told, "No." And then I asked, "If the administrator changes, does that resolve any kind of responsibility?" I was told, "No." So, I don't understand why, when in the minutes it tells you this will be done, why 13 years later, it's still not done? I'm just, I just don't understand, because we're being told, "Okay, well, the pumping station was turned over," but it was said in the minutes, "All infrastructure." So, that's my question. Why are we, you know, disseminating between this line or that line or the pumping station or whatever? You know, private or public? Why is there a distinction now than there wasn't at the year 2000, that meeting?
Well, I can't certainly speak for what happened at the previous one. For me, the issue is wanting to feel comfortable that whatever action we take is consistent with our existing laws and books, which in this case, there's two relevant laws. One's the charter, and the other is the sewer ordinance. And I just don't feel comfortable that what is being requested is, and maybe it is, maybe that case can be made. I'm just saying, from my own perspective, that I'm not prepared to vote on that until I, until it's been demonstrated to me that it is consistent with the sewer ordinance. I'm not saying the sewer ordinance is right, I'm not saying that the sewer ordinance doesn't need to be changed, and I just want to make sure that whatever action we take is legal.
What else do you need? I've been at this almost four years, I've been in front of this council, I was directed to go in front of the sewer commission, I've been back in front of the council, back in front of the sewer commission, back in front of the council. This has got to get resolved, this is not fair. What do we need, what do we have to do? I mean, we're showing you all kinds of proof, we've got the minutes, you know, if you want to go to town hall, we'll get book 21. There's more to Silver Pines that I'm gonna be back to you guys in the future with more stuff, regardless, get sewer, I'm coming back again, that there has to be an eye open. There's someone in this town, I don't know who it is, is preventing this to get resolved, and it's, they're figuring, "Well, maybe Joe DeMaio will go away." I'm not going away. I'm gonna keep at it, keep at it, keep at it, until I get it resolved. I think we're giving you enough information from what the resources that I have, that you should be able to act. And I would like to say something else. I know Russ is gonna be doing hydrant flushing. My question is, to Russ, if I may, how many gallons of water is used in hydrant flushing?
About 1,000 gallons a minute, times five minutes each, each hydrant, five to 10 minutes?
How many?
Five to 10,000.
How many condominiums or, you know of anybody else that has hydrant after the meter?
No.
Silver Pines has hydrants too, after one water meter that's installed at the beginning of Silver Pines. We do not have 62 meters, we have one. So, he's gonna do water flushing, we're gonna get built for that flush. Is anybody else gonna get built for that flush?
In your development?
No, anybody in the town. But we're gonna get built for flushing, correct?
But what?
Excuse me, you're not gonna get built, but again, Laura Woods pays for every meter that they have, so they pay 200 and something dollars, so you're kind of lucky on that. So, that one, that one, I won't agree with you at all.
Okay, Mr. McGee, we get charged, glad you brought that up, we get charged for 61 meters...
The door is broken, it's cycling on and off and on and on. So, if someone's out there and I don't know they're out there, I've started to ignore it, I think I irritated someone. Gary, can you hear it? So, when you were at the door, I stopped looking a long time ago, it just kept going, the dump, the dump, the dump, so there's no one there. Sorry, Joe, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Can I, can I elaborate on Mr. McGee's...
Actually, you know what, I'm gonna try to hold it there, for the simple reason, we're talking, what's on the agenda is to talk about the sewer.
Okay.
And now we're getting off onto a different topic. My pledge to you, because I, this issue has not come up since I've been on the council.
Well, let me ask you, were you involved with the council of 2000, 2001?
No.
Were you on the planning board?
I was on the planning board in 2000.
2000, 2001?
Right.
Okay.
So, my point is, that my pledge to you is, I would like to also get this resolved. I don't want to see this thing just keep coming back and keep coming back. What I would like to do is have the opportunity to ask our solicitor to review the sewer ordinance. You provided some wonderful backup here on the definitions of infrastructure in the minutes from the town council meeting of September 18, 2000, but it doesn't address either the charter or the sewer ordinance. So, I would like to ask the solicitor to do a review of the ordinance and the charter against what it is that's being requested, and be able to know whether what's being requested is consistent or not consistent with our laws.
I reviewed the ordinance, and there's nothing in it that says anything about...
Do you mind, Mr. DeMaio? I agree with a lot of things you said tonight, and Mr. Flaherty has a good point, too, but I'll tell you, you've been coming for three, four years.
Yes.
You know, you feel like a long-lost uncle to me. But I'd like it to end, and I'd like it to just, if that's what's fair for them, I would like to say, "Let's go." I know you've been to a sewer 100, 1,000 times, me too, you know I do the same, but let's just go one time, just one last time, and we're making a decision. The next time it comes, he goes one time, we listen to all our concerns, we check the charter, and next time he comes back, we're voting. Good?
Well, Mr. President, let's make sure that we review some of the sewer regulations that were in place in 2000, because that's very, very important, okay? The other point, Mr. DeMaio, Mr. President, I know you weren't here, and I know you do your best to struggle and to come up with what is right for everyone. Mr. DeMaio has provided previous town council members with packets close to an inch thick of information. Mr. DeMaio, I've read those packages.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, due to space constraints in my home, they had to go. Now, I would ask, that, I don't need one, but I would ask that maybe council, President Flaherty, he provided one, and I would also ask the town administrator to allow Mr. DeMaio to use town printing to do this. He has to burn through a printing machine.
It's cost me some money too.
I know it has, I know it has. He's come in here with a box after box after information. And I think, Mr. President, once you see the chronological history of this, it's in a whole new light. Look at what previous council members had promised the D A S, what happened on North Main Street, the 16 houses, I believe, there. This is a totally different, it's totally different than Laurel Woods and Rock Cliff. So, I think, once you have that information, Mr. President, Council House, have you received that information? So, I think basically, one packet from Mr. Flaherty and...
And perhaps for the solicitor.
So, I'll forgive you, the solicitor.
Are you talking about all the minutes that I had presented to you people? Because that's just one page of all the minutes.
I know, yes.
And I have that.
I know you do, and you did a very thorough job. If I needed to have someone do research work for me, you, Mr. DeMaio, I'd ask you to have the time. Now, maybe the town can give you the resources, the paper, and the copy machine, do you have the time to do it, is what it comes down to.
Well, I'll have time, but, you know, I'm not asking, listen, I'm not asking for any favors from anyone. I'm asking for what's right, that's all I have. We pay a lot of money to live in Silver Pines, everybody that lives there, we pay a lot of money. The market crashed, our houses are not, our condos are not worth anything, just about, they're worth something, but not what we paid for. But there's so much information that I gave you about the developer, that's another issue that I...
Excuse me, are we all right with what we wanted to do? Just take that motion back one more time, and that's it? Because we could go around, and like I said, there's plenty of information, just, I don't know if Mr. House needs any information on this, we've got plenty of information, we don't need to waste any more paper, any more time, just bring Mr. Flaherty up to speed on that if he wants.
Well, what I'd like to know is, did a previous solicitor weigh in with an opinion on this?
Yes, several.
Okay. Are you comfortable with reviewing the information that we discussed to determine whether what's being requested is consistent or not with the charter and with the sewer ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, I would, but I would like to have someone who's on the sewer commission is someone that has sewer knowledge to...
someone that has sewer knowledge to either assist me on it or... Or one of the other things is if you're sentenced to the sewer commission for a recommendation, then you can get it back with a rationale of why.
And that's, that's to your point. And I agree with you that I want to bring this to a close. I don't want to have to come back, you know, another three years. But I also want to make sure that we have sufficient time between now and when we make the decision to get whatever input is needed from the sewer commission. That means, you know, not the very next meeting, but the meeting after that. So I'd rather just do it once as opposed to having to come back multiple times.
Mr. President, previous sewer commissions have all planned on this. The current sewer commission, I don't think has applied on this. But I think it was, Mr. McGee said that we have different sewer commissions coming up with different opinions on this in the long run.
Everything's a different opinion.
Right.
It's time to make a decision with someone with knowledge and there are people, our best knowledge people are going, you know? And what we need to do is get together and come up with some good knowledge. And you know what? And like I said, this is my expertise and I'm trying to make common sense out of this. And I think we're somewhere, you know, I think we're where we need to be, but let's just, let's just go there. I'll be glad to go to the sewer commission with you so we can get a decision out of them that night too, just to make sure they know, this is it. Yes, no, what do you know?
I would be very grateful for you to accompany Mr. DeMaile to the sewer commission meeting and to be the council's point person on this issue, report back. And if it means that there's a quorum that wants to vote and you don't need my vote to do it, that's fine, but my vote's needed. I just want to make sure that what I'm voting on is legal. That's all.
That's fine. So I'll withdraw my motion for tonight, Tuesday.
Actually, you make the motion.
Yeah, you know, I'm fearful we push the vote because it may end up in a deadlock, which does not mean we could not bring it forward again. At this point, I feel it would be in a deadlock, there would be no movement on this. So, Mr. McGee, I will withdraw my motion, but rest assured, I will make that motion again another night.
Can I suggest a date while we're all here?
Well, give enough time for Mr. DeMaile to put his paperwork together and the solicitor to review it for the...
Excuse me, I have two things. Number one, the people on your sewer commission, most of them have come from the Pawtucket Water Authority. When you talk drinking water and you talk wastewater, you're talking two different animals. Just remember that. And one or two of the people you have now on that commission are on the Pawtucket Water Authority. You cannot compare drinking water with wastewater, number one. Number two, Mr. McGee, were you instrumental in installing the lines, the sewer lines in Silver Pines?
No.
Were you, did you work for a contractor who installed the sewer lines in Silver Pines?
I'm not on trial here.
No, I'm asking you a thing.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to straighten out these problems. I'm done talking about this. I mean, I'm blue in the face. We're going to solve this. I think we're on the right track. And yeah, I did some plumbing in Silver Pines.
You made a statement once that you said the sewer lines in Silver Pines...
I saw him on my coffee table.
Well, excuse me. Mr. DeMaile, you're going to be out of order in a moment. I'd like to propose that we put this on the council agenda for Monday, December 2nd, which provides sufficient time to have dialogue with the sewer commission, for the solicitor to review the sewer ordinance and the charter, and then I'm perfectly comfortable making a decision on December 2nd. That provides enough time in my opinion. Is there anybody who agrees or disagrees on the council?
Mr. President, out of respect for Mr. DeMaile as well as my council members, Mr. I understand what Mr. DeMaile's saying. I side with him, but if you would mind giving him another minute to make a statement, I would feel much better.
As long as it remains relevant to this topic.
Addressing the council president, is it fair to say that the sewer lines in Silver Pines are up to par?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize if I...
That's all. I don't know what you're saying.
If I did any, if I was disrespectful.
They've been inspected by inspectors, two inspectors, they're fine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, I'm available December 2nd.
Thank you very much. So I don't think we need a motion for that, but if the clerk would make a note, it will be on the agenda for December 2nd.
I need a second withdrawal.
Second withdrawal.
Second withdrawal. And I believe that, Mr. McGee, you'll be in touch with the solicitor about the next sewer commission meeting or wherever.
And then I'll go on with anything with you, if you want.
Yeah, thank you.
If we've made, Mr. President, I attended the last sewer meeting, so you may want to post it because I would like to be there as well with last, the town clerk would post it. I'm not, not that other council members have to because of this schedule.
I'd like to attend too, actually.
Oh, would you?
Well, one of the priorities, the most...
Yeah, so if we could post that at the next sewer commission meeting so that we could also look at it now, here when they get the second...
Can I ask a point of clarification for you? Paul's motion was very broad. It wasn't specific just to Silver Pines development, but there are other scenarios in town that are identical to what Silver Pines has. I own one of those lines. Two other houses are tied into it. I paid to install it. It's on private property. When I was, I mean, so is this going to apply to me too? That if there's a problem, you'll flush out that line? Because I paid $2,000 a year in sewer fees for a building that has five apartments with one person in each apartment. So $2,000 a year to flush the toilets? And I don't understand the difference between Joe's situation and my situation. We're both paying sewer user fees and I don't hear any guarantee that my line is going to be flushed out.
I think one important distinction, if I understand correctly, is that the infrastructure at Silver Pines was decidedly accepted as public infrastructure by the town council in 2000.
So this is going to be just the Silver Pines?
Well, if that's the basis of going into loading this line up, because it was infrastructure that the council accepted, then yeah, that will be a distinction as far as I can tell. But again, that's why I'd like to have a little...
Did they accept the sewer line in the public street or did they accept the sewer line that extended beyond the public street?
I'll read it for the record. It says, "Motion by Mr. O'Brien, Secretary of Environment, that upon completion of the sewer line, water line and any related infrastructure, that they will be turned over to the town." Now, it doesn't distinguish between whether you're talking about the pipes in the public roadway or on the private property. It doesn't distinguish the minutes.
Well, my situation is being the same as theirs. It doesn't distinguish the minutes. And at the time that I did that, I was told that there was, I forget the number of miles that they told me, of water pipes and sewer pipes in the town were never handed over to the town, that they were still under the names of the individuals who did the installations, like decades, decades back. So I just want to, I want to know, I don't want to have to be Joe, you know, fighting for four years if and when my terminal's up yet.
Is it a road?
But hearing it and I'm saying it's on, no, it's on private property, just like theirs. It's an easement that goes through three properties, yard and comes out onto Wild, I think it's Wildland Road or the Great Road. And they tie in also at my expense. So, you know, I just think it's okay. My line is on private property, his line is on private property. He pays a fee, I pay a fee.
There is, there is one distinction actually in this.
Well, if, if...
This could be material.
Is it a road?
In the minutes, I read you a motion. Right? The motion immediately before that, I'd like to just read that. It says, "Motion by Mr. O'Brien, Secretary of Environment, that DAS Corporation may grant a dollar-for-dollar credit for off-site water improvements." This is water. Off-site water improvements to be built according to water department specs with the credit to be spread 50/50, credits are not due until... And then we have the motion that upon completion of the sewer line, water line and any related infrastructure, that they be turned over to the town. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that DAS installed the lines in the public roadway as well. And so it could be that that motion is in reference to what was installed in the public roadway.
Right, okay. So that installation was 2006.
The, in the public road?
In the public road.
Oh, and then, so this was, this was in 2000, so this is...
So this was preliminary discussion before zone approval was granted to Silver Pines for Phase 1 and 2.
If you can actually read the motion before that one.
This is why I'd like to go to the sewer commission meeting.
Can I make one observation, please? There was comments, and I agree with what Tommy said, you know, this board says yes, that board says no, the next year, the rules are different. And if we're making a decision for him, then when the next person comes up, is the rule going to be different? Why isn't this being addressed through an ordinance that would apply to all privately installed sewer lines? And come up with some type of terminology so that everybody doesn't have to come back and I don't have to come up with a stack of papers like Joe did, ah, 44 years and I like doing it. You'll have it in the ordinance. The rules are spelled out. And I can't reiterate enough, I felt the same desperation as Tommy said he did. Everybody's rules are different and it's like, okay, who's here today? And that's a different set of rules for that guy. And it was the same thing with the sewer assessment rebates. I mean, I watched the private developer apply for a rebate and they were putting in the private sewer line. I didn't get a re...
And that's what we're doing when we're doing the ordinance system.
So going to be...
Yes, we're going to make this town nice.
All right. It's not going to be just...
And it's not going to be just so. I understood it a different way, like you did. So that's why we're going to work at this. Go through the commission, go through the lawyers and with Ms. Sampson, and we'll come up with some kind of a good agreement, but real quick.
One sec, Paul.
Right? Okay.
One sec, Paul, right?
Right. I don't want to have to find Mr. DeMaile, Chris, Mr. President.
All right, so the, this item is being, is going to come back on the agenda on December 2nd. And I guess, since you're here, if you would like to offer a closing comment on this, because many of us will be at the next meeting, which is when?
Right. It will be the third Wednesday of the next month.
So, remember that would be the 20th? Wednesday, November 20th?
I'd just like to address...
Could you just identify yourself, please, for the record?
Ken Murphy for Indigo Farm Road, West McNeill. I'd just like to address the council because this issue regarding, you know, Silver Pines and the sewer fee has come before the sewer commission. And I believe that if they are going to be charged, you know, the same fee as a private homeowner, then they should be entitled to the same service that any homeowner in the town receives. Now, I don't think they're asking, you know, for a lie here. If there is a blockage, and I believe they've had one, and it goes back, I'm not sure exactly...
2010.
2010. So they've had one blockage. It doesn't happen every day. They're charged what every other homeowner is charged. I think that, you know, it's come before us. The sewer commission has been really indecisive for the simple reason that there's been liability issues that have been raised. But, you know, the town goes in to Silver Pines, they collect the trash, they collect the, you know, they do the recycle, they flush the lines. If there's a fire, I assume the fire department would show up there. So as far as liability issue, I don't see any liability if all these other services are provided to them. They are residents, they pay taxes to the town, just like every other homeowner. They pay the entire fee. So it's my belief, and I'm here as a private citizen, not as a member of the sewer commission, but if they're charged what every other homeowner is charged, then they should receive the same service as every other homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm not disagreeing with your rationale. My only point is, what we should do and what the law says could be two different things. And I just want to make sure that if we're going to take action, that it's consistent with the law. Final word.
You're going to go back to the sewer commission, correct?
Correct.
For what reason?
I'd like to hear the sewer commission's deliberation on this.
So...
And I'd like for the solicitor to understand, the sewer commission, if they have a definitive opinion on this, what it is and how it relates to the sewer ordinance and to the town charter.
So a sewer commission's approval of this approval is going to influence, influence the town council?
No, it's a recommendation.
A recommendation? Is that what you said?
That's my understanding, is that the sewer makes recommendations to the town council. The council has, I believe, the council has the authority to make the decision, the town council.
Yeah, right.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And for me, it's just a legal issue. I just want to know legally, that's all.
So I'll ask the, since Russ is still here, there's one more issue that you may have managed to contribute to, and I'd like to, council officials, move it up, which is also under old business, 10 Item C, discretion by council or other actions on Framing Village sewer plan. And for that, I would call upon Scott Giff as chairman of the Congressman's LPR Development Initiative. I'm sorry, can I...
Good evening. I'll be right back. Just wanted to give a quick update regarding the issue of tax income financing. If you recall, we had previously discussed the option using tax income financing as a mechanism to underwrite a portion of the suggested sewer lines in Framing Village. The argument behind the TIF is our one that has dedicated revenue streams to the two. It would help if the town was really encountering a potential exceeding the tax levy by the state of Rhode Island, that any of the funds allocated under the TIF would not be subject to that levy. So we thought it might provide an opportunity for the town. We were also under the impression that with the investments going in by National Grid, that there was going to be a significant revenue stream from there, the junior earmark, in other words, using the National Grid area as a TIF district. We had confirmed that you could in fact use that revenue stream for an area that was not part of the TIF district as long as it was a redevelopment district. The council authorized the appropriation of $10,000 out of the revolving loan fund to be used to engage legal counsel to investigate, prepare TIF packages, bring back to the council for consideration. However, since that time, we've learned some other things. Number one, that a huge majority of the investment that National Grid was making was already on the tax books. It was on the town's 2012, 730 through 2012 tax budget. Therefore, all that increment is off the books. Now, if the books are off the table, you can't use the TIF financing. And there's very little left on the other side, basic conversation with National Grid. I got to really also applaud the tax assessor. She was phenomenal in being responsive to us. So we had some conversations and we, knowing that there were a lot of political issues, but we just wanted to investigate what other options we had, we looked at Downing Village. We had talked to the tax assessor and got a sense of what the increasing increment was going to come out of the Downing Village. Again, the argument being, if you're hitting the tax cap, this could still be a way to help mitigate that. However, based on some recent changes in the TIF legislation that was put in place in response to another community in Rhode Island's use of TIFs, they have been modified, the legislation has been modified. And in effect now, in order to use the money from the TIF as an offset... And in effect, now, in order to use the money from the TIF as an offset for the tax levy cap, it has to either be the same as a redevelopment district, or it has to be contiguous to the redevelopment district. So in this particular case, Downing Village is not contiguous to the Branch Village redevelopment districts. I mean, if you really wanted to take a very radical step, you could basically make modification to the redevelopment plan and create a corridor along 146, wrap her around to touch it. But the reality is, by the time you get through all that process, modifying the redevelopment plan, going through that process, you're out of this year, and so therefore, again, you're back to the same situation. So, long and short of it is, in our opinion, the TIF does not provide an avenue to finance the sewer improvements in Branch Village, and also get an offset on the tax levy cap. You can still use it, that's still a possibility, but it doesn't provide any buffer to the tax cap. So that really goes back to the original position is that, you know, the only other alternative is a geo bond. You know, to do that in the geo bond, it's going to be less expensive with TIF. Because the whole idea of working with the TIF was to deal with that increment, because the cost to make the infrastructure improvements in Branch are going to be high per user basis. So we're kind of looking at it as a way to mitigate that delta. So that's not all good news. Other fact that we did have a legal council go through this whole process and for all those expenses, we're obviously able to cut it off when we realize we're running into problems. So I would be more happy to answer any questions, but we thought it would be appropriate, John suggests we provide you an update on this issue.
You may recall that the last time we had this discussion, we were trying to figure out the best way to bridge the gap between what would be an acceptable assessment comparable to other assessments, and what the cost is. And there's a number of things going on. Redevelopment Agency has engaged Horsey Whitman Group to take a fresh look at some of the work that was done by Jeremia?
Yeah, just a very preliminary, though, very inexpensive. Just because there was a lot of questions being raised regarding the approach, and I just wanted to have a second.
I think on the plus, though, a geo bond...
Oh, I want to clarify, that process hasn't started yet, and it's going to start soon. Clearly, we're going to be doing that in conjunction with sewer future. We're not going off a separate path there.
I do think that principle of interest on a geo bond is also exempt from the levy cap. So that does provide that opportunity. Folks may remember that the town did authorize $21 million bond in 2007, I believe? No, I'm sorry, it was before that, 2006. And only four, $4 million and change could be used at that 21. But the thing with that bond is that the soul of the community is only being retained by RIT. So I wouldn't feel comfortable, we could pull the trigger on that tomorrow, we have the authorization legally, but I don't think it's the appropriate way to proceed. I think that we have this conversation, and I think that if we were to proceed, that especially with the geo bond, it should have voter authorization, with a clear understanding of how it's going to be paid. So, and I also, I know, just to close the circle on this sewer issue, that Lennox States Group has been, that we are members of, are also looking at the sewer ordinance as well?
We're looking at it, excuse me, we're looking at it with us, they've given us quite a bit of information, and looked at other communities, and see how we compare, and you know, they've done an awful lot of research. We do have a committee set up right now, we've actually met once. And, by the way, Mr. Monstrum is helpful to be on that, so he's back helping us out, and we really appreciate that. So, there's another meeting scheduled, we're going to be there, so, and they're wanting to go on, and they're going to start, and Russ is on the committee, so, you know, they've got different expertise, different areas, somebody who's in the trenches, and somebody who's, you know, got years of experience with Narragansett Bay, so we've got a good team in the, of Lennox States is also assisting.
So we have a lot of pressing reasons to get this sewer issue right.
Yes, yes.
Both the ordinance, plans here, dealing with issues at silver pines.
And make it consistent, and use that inherent, so we don't have any inconsistencies that you see buffer all the time.
No further questions, I will thank Mr. De...
Thank you, Senator.
And now we will resume with the normal order of the council's agenda. Moving on to, I'm wondering if we can, oh, okay. So, item number five, the North Smithfield Town Council sitting as the Board of License Commissioners. Item A, discussion by council vote or other action on two items, transfer of B to B liquor license from Penelope's Caccina, Doing Business as Caccina, to MMCR Inc., Doing Business as Caccina, as well as number two, vitualling license for MMCR Inc., Doing Business as Caccina. Who would like to speak in behalf of this application? Sir? I'll answer any questions if you have. I guess I would defer first to the clerk, the forms have been submitted, we've had them available to us, everything appears to be in order, is that your...
May we go last night, you can say anything, unfortunately, I had to make advertisements, this is basically the same transfer from last year.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Technical questions, Mr. President? Lieutenant Clerk, you may not really answer to this, but we're looking at the third page in, this word is certified by Mr. Mallow, on January 29, 2013. Is there a certain timeframe, is this still valid, this applicant, he's Board of Licensing Commission? Is this still valid?
Third page.
Third page. And it's all part of the application, it's a state of Rhode Island Board of Licensing Commission, application for license by corporation. And what she talks about, the amount of common stock, but the next page, third page in, is that date okay?
Yes.
It's fine, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the transfer of licenses as presented in Platteford? So, by Mr. McGee, seconded by Mr. Zulinski, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, ask for the roll call vote.
Alves, yes. McGee?
Yes.
Yasback?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you for doing business.
Well, we have a vitualling license.
I think we did that.
Oh, we should have did them separately.
I did them together, but I thought I was doing them together.
We should do them separately.
Okay.
So, if you want to stop, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if you touch it, if you touch this law license.
Get free to make a motion.
So, just for clarity, that first motion was for the liquor license transfer. Now I'd like to make a motion for who will have vitualling license for MMCRE incorporating Doing Business as Caccina.
Motion by Mr. Zulinski, their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGee, with a discussion. Hearing none, that's for the roll call vote.
Alves, yes. McGee?
Yes.
Yasback?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thanks again.
Mr. President, I'm wondering if just any way we could, I don't know if we've been in and out of order here, but E, Old Business, discussion of Chico Park, you know, a couple of people here that have come seven times.
Certainly, sure, that's fine. So if there's no objection, we'll move up item 10E, under Old Business, discussion by council, vote or other action on award of bid for Chico Park lighting.
Come on. Stick around a little bit. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I guess the, this came up as a vote for approval of bid, and I guess it was some questions, but I think some of that information has worked its way out. Council McGee, we've met with Mr. Skinner, the president of the Little League, and Representative Moscow Whitey. So, I don't know what you want me to say about it.
You guys asked me to, it was my thing, I looked at it, and I remembered that there were different numbers from the first time, and they were kind of way off, so I wanted to ask questions about it. And then they let me meet with everybody. And what it was, it was kind of a guesstimate estimate before, on some of the things. And then when I got another chart, it had some labor and pots, but then it had donations and everything, and I wondered if that was just rolled in. And I kept asking questions, and what it was, it was just in different categories. Everything was in there, the lights were one thing, the equipment was like $65,000 or so. And then they had a thing for labor, which was like, maybe, like roughly $12,000. But I wondered what the other stuff was for. And what it was, was they were going to be donations at that time, and that is for the concrete of putting up and digging, and the wiring, because they couldn't say how much wiring, were they going to need 400, were they going to need 100? So that had to be walked out and bid after, and those were those numbers. So I'm comfortable about everything that's happening now, and as far as the one bid, I wasn't really understanding the national bid, and I, you know, I went to school with it, Florida, last week with them, and it's the best bid that you can possibly get. So we all learned a lot last week, so I'm very comfortable now.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Mr. McGee to approve the award of bid for Chico Park lighting.
Moscow Sports Light.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Is there a motion, a motion's been made, or a second? Seconded by Councilor Alves, is there any further discussion?
Well, the record shows that it's Moscow Sports Light, they're in the hamster, and they have a cost of $8,000, $9,500.
That's what I moved.
So noted. And of course, you get that? Okay. They have motions, they're seconded, with a discussion, that's for roll call vote.
Alves, yes. McGee?
Yes.
Yasback?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
President, will the motion be administered by the finance director to a contract and sign it?
That's a good question. Will the motion from the administrator be authorized to sign a contract?
Is there a contract? There's not a contract, is there?
That's not a contract.
Okay.
Somebody has to sign it.
We're going to sign the purchase requisition that we have to put out.
All right.
So the finance director signs it.
Well, I'm just assuming if you don't have a bid package locally, that you would need some kind of contract.
Actually, it's usually the finance director has to sign it. I have paperwork that has to be forwarded to her.
Well, if she feels comfortable with council action so far, that's fine, I just want to make sure that we're ready.
So just in case, we need administration signature, just in case I'm attempting to create authority to administer it, so we don't have to come back again. That's a motion.
Motion by Mr. seconded by Mr. Yasback, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, ask for the roll call vote.
Alves, yes. McGee?
Yes.
Yasback?
Yes.
Mr. Zulinski?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries. On to agenda item six, proposed amendment to the North Smithfield zoning ordinance map for establishment of an historic district for assessors plat five, block 39, known as the Littlebread Schoolhouse. This is listed as a public hearing and discussion by council, vote or other action on a second reading. The public hearing is being continued from the previous public hearing. Mr. Harris, is there anything you'd like to start off?
Jeff Harris, 97 St. Paul Street, also with the Historic District Commission. If there's any further questions or comments you'd like to address?
I think at this time, I'd like to just ask if there's anybody who's here to speak on this issue, and invite you to the podium if you'd like to speak. If not, then I think that it would be appropriate to have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close? Move by Mrs. Zulinski, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McGee, is there any discussion? All if they ever say aye, aye, or both. The public hearing has been closed, and for discussion by council, vote or other action on second reading. I think we've had a pretty robust discussion last time. Unless there's any further questions by the council, I've entertained a motion to approve this as a second reading. So, move by Mr. Yasback, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Zulinski, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, just, you're motioning for the second reading, but I, it's unclear as well.
Your passage? I think it would have...
Motion to approve and accept second reading immediately.
I would request that the motion be amended to reflect the disapproval and second reading. So, move by Mr. Yasback, seconded by Mr. Zulinski.
Just a matter of semantics, student, not semantics. Do we want to withdraw the first motion, main motion, make a withdrawal in second? I would withdraw my second on the first one. Just to clear out, so we don't run into problems.
Second, anchor withdraws, first was withdrawn, would you like to restate the motion?
Give me the motion.
Motion to approve the establishment of an historic district for assessors plat five, and to consider this the second reading.
District map June 4, 2013.
So, move by Mr. Yasback, seconded by Mr. Zulinski, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, that's for roll call vote.
Alves, yes. McGee?
Yes.
Yasback?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much for your hard work and for the committee's work on this.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item number seven, proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding section 17, site plan review. This is listed as a public hearing and discussion by council, vote or other action on second reading. We've got information in our electronic package, and I know Mr. Erickson sent a follow-up email today with a one-page, so we couldn't make it into the original packet.
Mr. President, first my apologies, I was unexpectedly in Pennsylvania last week. But the issues that were raised were primarily in 17.8.1, which is about site planning, and how to change that from something that was seemingly onerous and subjective to something that was really a design guideline, as I think it was originally intended to be. So, the changes were delete the second paragraph, because it's a kind of environmental design east, it's not very easy to understand for the average applicant. And then, under natural context, the following specific area should be preserved, as opposed to shall be preserved. And then, on that list, you'll note that the 1 and 8 are stricken out. That's only because if you strike out more than half of the line, it strikes out the number 2 as well. So, put down the things that are protected elsewhere, and it's really, at this point, a reminder to think in totality about what the design should encompass, not requiring them to do anything. However, if you find any one of those unnecessarily redundant for other sections of the ordinance, feel free to recommend striking them out. But as you change from shall to should, it becomes just a general perspective on what good design should be. And as I noted in my email, I often find that very good environment design people, whether they're civil engineers, architects, or landscape architects, often miss the options to use what's already there to add value to the project. And it's one of the things I enjoy about the job, because you can sit down and talk about it, and people come to a better understanding of what their options are. So that was the first part. The second part was an interesting issue raised on 17.8.1 of mine, which is figure 2, where it says developments should take advantage of natural solar irradiation. And remember the planning board chairman speaking as an economic development person, said that was a grade school error. It's actually not, it's technically correct, when...
You referred to 17.8, page 17.8?
Yeah, that says natural solar radiation.
Different, yeah, different.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right. So when you go to figure two, in 17.8.1, when you go to figure two, it says protect natural features and slopes.
Yes.
And then the text says developers should take advantage of natural solar radiation.
Yes.
When a body emits radiation, that's radiation, could be any kind of wave, whether it's an X-ray or ultraviolet or whatever, infrared. When a body receives the radiation that's been emitted from elsewhere, that's a process called irradiation. The body accepts the radiation. Again, it can be anything. In this case, it's so is sunlight and all its components. So that's correct. And there's another section on parking. And that is just past figure 18. There's so many pictures in here. 17.8.2 is the starting point. And then on figure 18, it says creatively utilize gray changes in parking lots.
We'll just see if we can, this was, the document had to get split into a couple of sections before getting...
Please, 17-19.
17, okay.
That's what I have.
Lot to be said for how... Lot to be said. Sorry, Bill. Hope we get the whole printing machine we were on for.
Begin for parking areas should be separated from buildings. So there's the should right up front.
Yes.
And then the next paragraph, the buffer trip shall be planted with grass. I'd recommend that that be should, again, to make it a design recommendation rather than absolute. Parking areas should be located to the veer sides of buildings out of sight from passing traffic. You can't do a universal shall because it just isn't feasible in a lot of cases. And some parking in front gives signals as to whether the place is open or whether it's doing any business or whether it's too full, so you actually don't want to go in. And then the last paragraph, parking areas shall be softened with vegetative screens, that should again be should. There, the issue of vegetative screens within, you know, parking dividers is very controversial. If you go to Lincoln Mall and come out, every one of those exits onto the mean road out is a violation of the, would be a violation of the street site triangle and it's almost impossible to see. So what I'd recommend here is that we treat it as a design recommendation rather than as an absolute. Those are, I think, were the only areas that had serious shals that probably should have been considered.
Sure. I went through and noted the things that we discussed last time and I believe that with the exception of the ones that you gave us in the sheet, we're all changed to reflect what we discussed in the briefing. You suggested a few additional things that we hadn't yet discussed for changes. So I'm assuming that, that your recommendation is that we carry it forward to the next meeting with a clean copy.
Yep. Unless somebody has some, you know, thoughts about, well, it'd be appropriate, and this is a public hearing as well, so it should be open to...
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Erickson before we entertain public comment?
I do a clarifying question. Mr. Erickson, on the page you handed out this evening, you talk about you have a little difficulty to strike through in Word. So when I look at the enumerated one through eight there...
Yep.
Example, number one is stricken through. That will not have the strike through. I'm trying to follow what you're saying.
Right, the one will not have the strike through. The problem is in Word, if you cross out more, strike through more than half the line, it will strike through the number and it adds a level of...
Adds a bit of strike through, okay. So maybe I can sit down and try and figure that out for you. I haven't seen that before. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, when you say clean copy, you mean it's still going to have...
It's still going to be redline version, but it's going to include those, it's going to include this page.
Yes.
Yes, no including the other changes that you recommended.
That's our next color.
Shall, should. So with that, I would invite anybody who would like to offer a public comment, please.
Hi, Scott Gitts, 16 Maple Avenue, Forest, Elrod Island. I apologize because I know, when I was chairman of the planning board, I didn't like people like me. I don't like them still. But I didn't really know about this issue and Mr. Ozowski just showed me the document fairly quick. The one thing I wanted to say is, and this is no indifference to people who I'm sure have worked very hard on this, but I find this design review ordinance to be extremely heavy-handed. Tone and the whole weight of structure basically is a thousand more ways to build projects. And maybe that's the intent. And, or maybe there's a belief that the more owners you make something, the better quality development comes, although I think we're not to prove that otherwise. It is, I, I think, I would caution the council to be a little careful here and maybe get a new, a fresh set of eyes on this thing. I, last week spoke at the Southern New England APA Conference in Worcester, along with a good friend of mine, Mark Waterhouse out of Connecticut. And we were brought in to talk to planners about economic development, how do you create jobs? And allow planners to be put in the situation now with the effort you have. Planners and economic development is a very difficult balance to have. But what I found very compelling, and this is what Mr. Waterhouse commented on, and he does consulting work all around the country, there are communities in this country who are guaranteeing permits in seven days. There are some communities that are guaranteeing permits in three days. And I look at ordinances like this and my head begins to spin. There's a reason why New England has lost 450,000 people out of our region between 2009 and 2012 for hemorrhaging population. Our economy is horrendous right now. It just, and I was just looking at Conway data, which is tax business investment, of the total deals in 2012 done in this country, deals of a million dollars or more, 20,000 square feet or more. New England represented 3% of the total national total, 3%. So we've got to start learning how to be a little bit more progressive in how we work with our companies and a little bit less dictatorial on regulation because, again, I'm a developer, I deal with development all the time, I serve on the planning board, I work the design review commission all the time, I get it, but I think this record is very, very heavy-handed. That's, no specifics, just a quick review of the document.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You say that there are some communities that will approve a project within, does that mean...
Not in the northeast.
Okay.
I promise, all permits within seven days. All permits. Part of that too, Paul, this settlement, is that it's also how they deal with who can certify plans. So in many cases, professionals in the field can self-certify actual stand plans. So I'm not suggesting that that's something in the northeast that we can aspire to, a seven-day permit period. But what I am saying is...